I call the April 1st, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting of Glencoe Park District to order. Alisa, please call the role and note the time.
Great, it's 7:03. Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Hovey is absent right now. Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Spector?
Here.
President Spain?
Here. Okay. It is not our practice to address questions at this time. However, we will take comments under advisement. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to make any comments unrelated to Milton Playground or the Take If Maintenance Center? Okay, we'll have public comment for those matters as we go through them in the agenda. So first, next, or next, we have Michelle Kelly from Upland Design Incorporated will provide a presentation on playground design options for the Milton Park Playground. Welcome, Michelle.
All right, I got show and tell tonight. Thanks so much for having me tonight, and I'm Michelle with Upland Design, a landscape architect. I'm going to walk you through some options for Milton Park Playground renovation. So first, just a little look around the site. Dundee Road is to the north and then Grove Road to the west. The playground sits at pretty much the corner of Grove Road and the pathway on the south end of the site that travels through the site. It's a very wooded site and there really is not a lot of lawn, just that far northeast corner, there's a little bit, but it's a beautiful site. And when we went to visit the site, there were people playing on it, right, in winter, so that was great to see. Here are some images of the existing play equipment. So the surfacing is a wood mulch. And you can see on the lower left-hand corner, there are daylilies in the forest that are growing right up to the edge of the playground. The site has an existing picnic table and one of those classic Glencoe swings. So we have two concepts tonight. The first one, A, is called Sky. And now you can see why. It has these lovely clouds as its shade over the top and a kite flying above it. And it has a roller slide on the left and then kind of a fun, almost new age looking slide on the right. And then numerous climbing pieces across. It forms, in plan view, it forms a triangle. And that triangle you can climb across in lots of different ways. This is just an idea to give you that scale of where it sits and how big it is across the whole site. So this is just right around the same size as the existing playground. All right, now you can see that overhead, you can see sort of the triangle of climbing across it. It really has a lot of different fun climbers. And then it has some ground level pods. And then we've also added to the playground is a saddle spinner in the northwest corner and then a set of swings. I'm going to go just here so you can see that whole, all the playground pieces in one image together. The swings have two belt swings, one tot swing, and a friendship swing that kids can sit together or a parent and a child could sit together on. And so it makes it kind of extra fun. The sign off to the right is our safety sign, which also says the, you know, the age range for this playground. And you can see this is very green. This, the 3D doesn't see the nice forest, but the green is made up of artificial turf. And so I just brought a little sample. There's, um, there'd be a pad underneath it, so that gives it the resiliency that we want to see, but there's no infill. So there's nothing getting stuck in your socks and shoes when you play at this playground. Right now, we have the artificial turf in the budget and it's fitting the budget, but let's just say that it came in over for some reason. Then we could look at doing a part of it as engineered wood fiber. That is an option, but right now it does fit the budget. This blues and greens seem to be a really nice color palette, but I just wanted to be able to show you that there are other colors. There's leaf and limon and there's seafoam and blue, so there are a lot of other colors. But this is a really nice combination of green and denim, denim being kind of a dark blue. And then, of course, you can see the creamy white clouds. Another piece that is added to both Concept A and B is this Willow Hut and a little tree cookie walk out to the Willow Hut. So the whole area around the playground is very nature-based. And this is, gives the kids an opportunity to actually kind of enter into that overhead canopy space. The tree cookies are made of real chunks of wood cut and they're set on a gravel base with chips in between. So it compacts down and it's easy to walk on. And then the Willow Hut is sort of this hiding spot that, as you can see, is kind of see-through. Not somewhere you're going to hide and not be able to be seen, but is something kind of fun and feels like it fits in the forest. So you can see on the kind of circles there, there's a couple little pathways and entrances to get to it. And then also, on the lower left-hand corner of the playground, we'll have a bench. It's the relocated bench. There's a memorial bench there already. It's an eight-foot long, so a really nice thighs. And then there'll be a companion seating to the right of it. And then also in the playground is a, is, will be the refurbished Glencoe bench. So that will be done by the park district. All right, so there is the summary of all the pieces that are in Concept A. Before I go on, anything? Anyone want to ask anything?
So what they're under the trunk, that what we usually call ported place?
This is actually, ported place is like a unitary rubber that's put down with a, yeah, this is actually artificial turf.
Oh, okay.
Like we did at Lakefront, Bart.
Okay, I see, I see. Okay, thanks for that.
Is that more durable than what we have at Friends Park?
The turf is much easier to maintain when you do have issues. The problem we have with the ported place rubber surfacing is when it starts to fail, you see that patchwork of kind of Band-Aids. When you have to repair areas of the artificial turf, it's a much quicker process to undertake.
Same material as in Lakefront, correct?
Lakefront and West School Playground as well, and back here at Take If.
What's the, I really like the path with the wooden piece, the wooden tree pieces. What's the expected duration of that?
You mean the lifespan? You know, most of the time, we actually put one in Carpenter'sville, like, oh, God, I want to say about nine years ago, and it's still doing really well. So we kind of expect them to last at least 10 years. Honestly, some wood is softer than others. So if someone uses softer wood and it degrades, the whole idea is that you pretty much would cut a new piece of wood and put it back in again. So it's.
That's a nice accent of nature to that thing.
Yeah. Lot of, we have a lot of metal and plastic in playgrounds, so this is a great way to kind of take this playground and make it feel like it belongs a little bit more Milton. All right, so B is called Woodland. And you can see why. It is really much more of this sort of wooded feel where some of our posts actually look like wood, the climbing pieces. There's some rocks to step up on it. And you can see, these are just different views of it. So you can see there is climbing pieces, there's sliding, and then we have some roofs. There's two roofs that are recycled lumber, but it kind of looks like it's somebody, kids might have made it. And then there are the fun trees. There's an evergreen and a deciduous tree. But each of the pieces on this is made to feel like it's a little, like, kids cut it, or maybe dad helped them create it. It also would be sitting on top of artificial turf. And it's just a little bit different layout. We're going to give you a B1 and a B2. This is B, the first, or B and B1, this is the first one, and you can see that it also has two belts, a full tot and a friendship swing and the saddle spinner. So we really have the same elements for the other pieces, as you saw in A, with the exception that the playpiece is, is really more of that woodland theme. And then we also have the Willow Hut, which is located in just a little bit different layout in this one. And there you can see that saddle spinner and the swings and all of the pieces of B that go together. And then B1 is, we just shrunk it a little bit because the first B is taking up a little bit more space. It has a bigger footprint than the existing playground. But the reason is that we have that larger swing set. So in this, we've taken it down to two belts and two tots. So there's new friendship swing and we have a little bit smaller footprints. But we still have the Willow Hut, the relocated Glencoe Swing, and the eight-foot-long bench.
The first concept, is that footprint the same as existing or bigger?
The footprint, it is almost exactly the same. It's maybe just a few feet bigger in one kind of edge. Yeah. Right now, there are, there are some trees in the use zones that are not considered safe per ASTM and CPSC. So in both the concepts, all of them, you will see that there are, we have, we had made sure that we've adjusted so that we don't have any trees in the, in the use zones. This, you know, you wouldn't want a new playground that doesn't meet. And there's the swing, so you can see that in B1. And there's all our pieces together. And that just gives you a picture of like what that artificial turf, it's, it is $24 a square foot right now, our current pricing. Where, like I said, the engineered wood fiber is quite a bit less and it is kind of a backup plan, just in case something comes in over. Right now, we have very current pricing on all the equipment, so we're feeling really good about where, where all of that is at. And then here's the three, so you can see them all on one spot.
Can you explain for Concept B about, I can, how many additional square feet that's adding or take?
So where it's adding is just kind of, I wish I could use this arrow, but the arrow is not working. So.
You right-click, it usually has a highlight or zoom option.
Oh, that's okay. Okay.
So if you look along, we're along the sidewalk, the main sidewalk, you'll see some kind of shrubs along the sidewalk. Where those shrubs, they're actually just like grasses, where they end, that's where the playground ends right now. And so if you see, see how that, that there's the curve that goes past it, that's the extra square footage that you see.
A, the least change?
B1 is the smallest footprint. And then A, we, we bump out just a little bit where the friendship swing is, while B bumps out a little bit more.
But A is the only one with the path and the Willow Hut on this side. That's further into where the wooded area is.
So.
Yeah.
That's most trees, not limbs. So that, but the use zone hits that.
It's magic. Okay. Okay, so, so this is where the playground ends right now. This little line right here, if you go out, it ends right there. So just this little section here is, is over. And then in B, if we draw that line out here, this section over here is over. Currently, there really isn't play equipment in this area right now, but there is kind of use zone. Does that make sense? Like, there's not a swing sitting there where kids can jump off the swing, what we would say is ASTM and CPSC use zones. It is eating into that space even though there's trees there.
Your question, Stephanie, the walkway to the hut, I think they're both in the forest in just different areas, do you see?
Yes, correct. Hi.
If there aren't any additional comments or questions, we could take comments from, from the public at this time. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment about the Milton Park Designs? Okay, great. I love to see the interest. I'm just going to make a statement here about, about how we do the public comment. So it's our practice not to address questions at this time. However, we will take comments under advisement. So if you would like to make a comment about the Milton Park Playground, you may come up to the podium. You may come up with a parent if you choose. And comments are limited to three minutes per person, and we'd love to hear a youth perspective as well, so. Whoever wants to go first, just kind of state your name and make your comment.
I just wanted to say that all three options look great. Thank you so much. But as a parent, my initial thought is the woodland concept. I see kids climbing on the roof the whole time. So I just thought that might be something you want to take into consideration, because I feel like that's what happened at Friends Park all the time. And I just see my own kids climbing on the roof and jumping off, but it's, it's beautiful. I'll be fine with it, but just something to think about. And I guess I can't ask, but I'm curious what the Willow Hut is made of, but.
Well, we'll address that. Thank you.
My name is Maxi. I kind of, I like to both on Concept A and Concept B, so I was thinking that it would be fun if we put the cloud from Concept A onto Concept B. And also for the climbing from Concept A, that could be like the part of the forage for, since Concept B is like nature-themed.
Can you, can you tell me a little bit more why the, do you like, just like the, the structure in A? Like, do you think that's more fun? But like, can you tell me more about what you like about it?
Which is why you want to come by.
Just say what you like both.
Kyle, can you go back to A so we can point out?
We're going to go with your friends, and you can only go the one. And we couldn't mix and match, Maxi, we won't, but we couldn't, which one would you choose and why? Which one do you think you and your friends would like to play on?
So there's the first one.
Actually, I think maybe Concept B, because the one we have at our school was, there's, there's a big climbing thing. And like Concept A is.
Similar.
Yes.
Yeah, this would be more different. This was your first, your first gut reaction was you liked this one quite a bit. I think you'd have some good imaginative play on this one, right? Good memory. We did discuss that there might be other park renovations happening in the area at some point, so lots of great parks to come, right? Any final comments you'd like to make or suggestions? Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Good job. Good job. Do we have any other comments? Okay, great. With that, I'd love to open it to further discussion from the board. And I guess maybe we can start out with the Willow structure.
Yeah. Okay, so the Willow Hut is, the framing of it would be like a metal frame. And then actual willows can be added to it, and then the willows actually grow. So the willows need to be added between February and May, so it might be something that gets done the first year, but it could be something. And then once they're, once they establish, they're actually, they root in the ground and then they'll grow every year. So, yeah, it's kind of a combination.
Yeah, well, that's fun. Okay, any, any initial reactions from, in feedback from the board?
I have my favorite, but I'm wondering, and I think we've done this in the past, if we could do a survey for kids who are actually going to use it and ask and see where we're at with the options.
Um, we could bring it to like our after-school programs in our ELC program, yes. We can't really do it through the school, but we can do it in our programs. Absolutely. Where we take our iPad and go around and show them. Absolutely, we could do that.
Like the Beluga Room, you could survey.
We could do a type Beluga Room, yeah. Yeah, we also have a, we created the survey in, with a QR code, and so you could, you could also put it on your website or send it home to parents.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Because it's such a neighborhood park, and I feel like there's a lot of that age group over there, so.
Yeah.
I'll take my opinion. Personal opinion matters here. I'll keep my opinion to myself.
The neighbors were all invited to this meeting also, and they indicated, we indicated if anybody contacted us or they couldn't come to the meeting, that the, these concept plans will be on our website starting tomorrow. And so we'll reach out to them again. Anybody who left their email at the last meeting, we'll reach out to them, email them and with the survey.
I have one question. That's kind of my typical MO question. Which one is easier to maintain? Because I see wood, it's probably not real wood, it's plastic, it's the, it's the recycled plastic bags.
Yes.
Both are easy to maintain, both are going to last the same long period of time. I'm going to come after you if it comes down, you know, if in the next five years we have technical problems with it. So I am curious to know which one is going to stand the test of time.
So, and I feel like the, the parks maintenance staff are always standing right here when I'm, we're designing, not like all of them, right, right? The whole, this whole team, they're always, so, so they're both pretty easy to maintain, especially with the artificial turf where you're not having to break back things. I would say between the two of them, A does have ropes and those are very sturdy, they're made to last a long time. But that would be a little bit more maintenance, if you want my honest opinion, between the two.
Well, that's good, because I actually really like B. I'll give my opinion. I'm not going to be like Stephanie and wait for the, the kids. I'll tell you, and I'll tell you why I like B, and I think my little buddy over there.
You like B better too, right?
A does look a lot like the playground at South School with that kind of middle stuff. And honestly, like, you guys have all convinced me over the years how important it is to make sure the parks match the aesthetics. Like, I wanted something big and fun at the park, at the beachfront, and you guys all told me, no, we want it to, you know, match the aesthetics and do that. So like, I can't think of anything more that would match, you know, Milton Park being in the woods itself than, than B. So that's my two cents, and the fact that it's easier to maintain makes it easier.
I mean, I, I think it invites imagination and to think about the environment with the, with the, I will also say the friendships, that's Friendship Swing is very loved by my kids. I'm trying to think, I don't think we have that exact kite type.
We have one in Shelton, but that's.
In Shelton, but it's not the exact one. Yeah, there's one in Kennelworth that looks like that. And it's, it's really fun. So as much as I don't want to go change the footprint of the park significantly, that swing is really fun.
It is fun, and that's why we, we like that concept with that swing, because it is very, that neighborhood has a lot of varying ages, so having different swings for different ages.
And as a parent, it's a nice park to push your kid because you have something nice to look at.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
But I do hear our, our colleague or constituent over there, if there's a roof, kids are going to climb on it. We have a gigantic sign on, what's that building next to Central School? The.
DYS Building?
The, where the oasis is at Central, what's that?
DYS Building.
Yeah, I mean, that one has a big sign. Don't climb on the roof. I do see it at Friends Park. I don't, I think this park is geared towards more little kids, and so hopefully the parents can remind them not to. It also looks like it's really hard to get on the roof unless you're a bigger kid. So I'm not, I'm not as concerned about it, but I do understand what, you know, what they were saying.
Okay, you're going to force me to make my comment then, because none of you agree with me, so.
We're forcing you to make a decision?
Because you're not agreed. I would caution us against expanding the footprint because of the first meeting we had and all the emails we had. There was definite discussion with the neighbors of keeping this more of a passive park, and expanding it is obviously not doing that. And I do think that A has more to offer in a small structure, so I do prefer the layout and the equipment there. They're both very nice and appropriate for this age group, but that's my two cents.
Jordan, what do you think? You've got little ones.
I mean, I like B, I like the kind of like treehouse woody vibe. I am with Stephanie on the expanding the footprint piece of it.
Do you have?
I mean, I'm torn, because I do like B better, but I do agree with Stephanie. I don't know. It's, for me, it's, that would also be kind of a deferring survey back to the actual community around the park, because.
It's the structure, yeah.
Do we, we have to expand the footprint for B?
Only for that one swing.
For this one swing, yeah.
Yeah, this is how we could do it without.
We went with B1, there's no expansion.
Exactly. That's, that's why we did a B1.
I would probably go B1.
The only expansion would be the Willow Hut, but we did get a lot of comments, and I don't believe, I, Stephanie, you weren't there, that everybody wants to incorporate something in, in the woods. Some people wanted a zip line that was out of our budget, so we instructed not to put a zip line in. And we thought this was a very creative way to get into the woods, imaginative play. I like that it's still a little see-through. It's not totally, totally covered. It's just a nice way, we're always looking at ways to get people under the tree canopy, and I think this is a really creative way to do that.
Bart, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I like, I like all the designs. I think it's a really exciting improvement for the park. I don't have young kids, so I'm not used to seeing how they play on different structures. I, I don't have a preference for one over the other.
Is there any way of putting the Friendship Swing back into B1? I don't know, I guess, like, how much space does it take up? Does it have to?
It's all the fallings.
So it needs its own bay. Like, we can put two, you can see the, the two tots and the two belts. So if you took away, say, the two belts and put in the friendship, you could have it in, in B at this and not need. Or if you took away the two tots, you could have, you could have the friendship and keep the same footprint. The saddle spinner is, if we took that out, it doesn't really still give us enough room, because I need 32 feet. That's the depth I need for that swing set. It's, it's a very deep requirement.
Toddler with the belts, so it's rude.
Yeah.
You can't, you have to.
No, so there are choices, but you'd have to give up something if you don't want to get a bigger footprint.
How, how much are we expanding the footprint if we were to do it all? Like.
Let me go back here.
I mean, is it like 5%? Is it 50%?
So it's really, like, this is the line right here, so it's just this section, the past, this is where the swing, the playground ends right now.
So we're talking like, less than 10% increase, something like that.
Yeah, I think probably 10 to 12 is probably what we're talking about.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not overly concerned about expansion of something so small to get it all in, but.
Do we talk about if that, this would have to, we would have to cut down trees to do this expansion?
We did not talk about that. Would you like to?
Yes.
Yes, we will have to take down trees, because the trees are in the use zones right now. They're in the footprint of the playground, and it's not safe. Like, immediately when we went to the site, if we were auditing in it, we'd be like, oh, hmm, we need to take those down. Because what happens is that kids don't expect a tree to be there, so one, they run into them. And two, they'll be jumping from a swing, you know, because they want to go as high as you can and jump off, and then we'll, that tree would be in the use zone of, to hit someone. That's what was the, the actual problem, is that they're in the swing use zone. So it's, the trees that we're taking down are specifically ones in the playground right now.
They shouldn't be there. The guidelines have changed since that playground was put in 25, 30 years ago. They have to be removed no matter what.
Okay, so, so we should not take into consideration removal of the trees when we're thinking about design, because they'll be removed no matter what?
Be removed no matter what.
Okay.
We're going to have to go through it, you know, right now. Yeah, yeah.
But some of the plans remove more.
Say that again? So the bump, yes, the bump out does remove two additional trees that are, I will tell you, are right on the edge. I will tell you, are right on the edge of the playground now. And when we put the artificial turf in, are going to be impacted anyway. About 50% of the root zone will be dug out to be able to put in the safety surfacing. So that's the two trees that are in this kind of area here. Now, could you save? Yes, they totally can be saved in place. And then there'd be a watch and wait situation because you're cutting so many roots out to be able to put in safety surfacing. So it still would be kind of a watch and wait to see how they react to that impact.
Could they, could that potentially cause a hazard if the trees don't respond well?
If they don't respond well, then they would be taken down. That would be the suggestion. Yeah, that's why you watch and wait. You know what? If they keep leafing out, they're fine. They're getting, the roots are getting what they need. The problem is when you start seeing a dieback, 30 to 50%, and that's when you start looking, you call it a hazard tree.
What about this very artificial, not natural surface we're putting in? Is that problematic that it's covering? I mean, even if you don't have to take out roots to put it in, like covering roots, the what, like right now, the wood chips are porous, you know, having that.
This actually is very porous surface as well. What goes in underneath it is a CA7. It's a rock that doesn't have any fines. So it's actually made to be extremely porous. And underneath engineered wood fiber, we put four inches of CA7 too. So both of those would get a underlay, underlayment of drainage rock so that your water wicks away and keeps the playground safe instead of getting frozen and hard and not attenuating. So whether you put engineered wood fiber in, where you're digging out pretty much a foot for the engineered wood fiber and four inches for your gravel, or you're putting an artificial turf, which is, uh, that, that depth plus another six to eight inches of gravel, you're digging out either way. So that you have a really good drainage system to take the water away from the surface. So engineered wood fiber is a more natural product, but we have to still do the same impact to, you know, the underlayment.
Are any of the trees affected like heritage, like the Glencoe oak trees or any special?
No, we did, we went out and inspected all of the, all of the trees that are in the site and right adjacent to it. So no, there's nothing that. And actually, I mean, there's a tree outweighs that is absolutely gorgeous and big. And, you know, we were very careful not to be impacting it.
So it sounds like, it sounds like the two trees are at risk either way. One is, either we wait and see, or, you know, we would remove. But it's almost, is there any safety issue with those trees where, let, let's say the wait and see works and the trees are going to last and they're going to be awesome. Um, would that still be at all a safety concern just with the proximity to the rest of the park or not really?
They would be outside the use zones. So from, from a safety standard, no, no.
No. Okay. That's good to know.
What is the estimated budget difference between B and B1?
So B is 278,000 and some change, and B1 is 263,000 and some change. So the difference is from 78 to 61, 17,000.
I don't mind. Neighborhood park. Aren't going to do anything here at some point. Yeah, we are, but it's another 17,000 and expanding the footprint. So.
When do you need a decision on this?
Uh, we have time. We have time.
I think it'd be helpful to have a, choosing a concept that we like, A or B, and then we could have time to decide on B1 or B.
Well, yeah, I, we should have time for either way. I mean, the playground, the risk of waiting and keeping and dragging it along is that we take down the existing playground with no plan to put in another one. So, and we go out of the time zone of, you know, building. But if we decided in the May, April, May meeting, that's fine.
My, my hunch is that we're going to end up in a situation like July 4th, where you have 50% like one and 50% like another. I'm happy to ask kids. I, I feel really good about our buddies proposal there. I mean, look, these, these are two incredible concepts. And as usual, you know, you and your partners bring to us phenomenal things. I don't, I don't mind waiting a, a little bit if we really want to get feedback. I just don't think feedback's going to tell us anything. I think, I, I think we're going to see a 50/50 split.
But to, to Kyle's point, if you like concept B over A, that would be helpful. Then we can, we can narrow it down to when we show the kids.
Yeah.
Or do you want to show them both concepts, A and B? It's, it's solely up to you.
Well, I feel like for the kids, they're not going to care about the footprint.
Or the party.
No, they're going to care about whether it's a friendship swing, I guess. That would be the thing to ask.
Yeah, I don't know why they wouldn't say.
Yeah, I mean, who doesn't want more? It's like asking my wife when we go buy a car, do you want the heated seats? She's not going to say no, right?
Lisa, would, would it make sense to do the Survey Monkey and then make a decision based on like a week's worth of data at the regular board meeting with enough feedback? Is that?
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah.
Discuss again? We can absolutely do that.
So we could get it posted as soon as tomorrow and give it a week's time and?
Yeah.
And that would go out with an email to the neighborhood?
The one, the, the ones who gave us their email address. We don't have everybody's.
Go with that. I like that a lot more than relying on the kids in school and things like that. Cause I think it's, this way the parents can.
Oh, again, so ones that gave us their emails. So, yeah. Um, that'd be great. Uh, just to let you know that also came out of the community, um, group at, at meeting was the concept of a goat statue. We did check.
I'm sorry, about what?
A goat statue. The kids asked for that. We did, we did ask Michelle. Michelle found us a goat. Um, much to my churin, we took the goat out because it was outside of our budget. The goat was able to be climbed on. It was about 18,000. So that could be a donor item, I suppose, in the future.
I know what you're thinking. I know exactly what you're thinking.
But I just want to make sure we heard that from the community. We just, it was not our budget to do that. So.
Expensive goats. So this, just give you a little bit of, of the schedule so you know where we're going. Um, obviously it's our public meeting. Um, from here, we're going to go into construction doc, documents. And we'll just put a pin on it and hold until you guys make a decision on which one. Not, not a big deal at all. And then, um, and then the plan is to, um, be able to get this, uh, bid in May and then back to you in June and, um, then get it built this summer.
Do you think any of the materials are going to be impacted by the tariffs? Like how much?
Hopefully it's built in.
This is a great question. Yeah. So what, um, we're definitely, um, the, uh, the manufacturers, both these manufacturers are made in America. So that's one good thing. The downside is, of course, there are materials that are coming from other countries. So what we're recommending right now is that as soon as you've decided on equipment, is to try to go ahead and get that purchased on. Because what we're expecting this year is that rather than having our, our prices go up once a year, which we would see January 1, we're expecting to see multiple, um, times that the prices are going to go up. So we figure, let's get the, get your order in. Um, you can do it through a co-op purchase. Um, and then that way you don't have to worry about that price. Most of the other things that in this particular project are all stuff that are very local.
Yeah, I think then if we can get a little bit of feedback from the neighbors, we should make the decision at the next board meeting.
Yeah, sooner we do it, the better it is to move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Um, next, we're going to be discussing, uh, the Take If Maintenance Center in Ball Field. And Bob Ijams from White and Company will be leading that presentation. Welcome.
Again, I'm Bob Ijams with White and Company. I'm our Director of Parks and Rec. Excuse me. I am a little nervous tonight. Couple, couple things. So I'm pinch hitting for Anya, our lead designer. And, um, so I'm going to do my best to present the design with, um, without her. Second thing is I'm a Park District Commissioner as well for the Ospego Land Park District. And I'm up for reelection tonight.
Oh.
But.
Good luck.
I'm running unopposed, so I just need one, one vote. So, uh, hopefully that'll come through. All right. So we, um, uh, we've been working with staff over the, uh, the past few months to, uh, refine the program. Do the topographic survey, the geotechnical information, really kind of narrowing down, um, the specific spaces and the uses uh, for the maintenance facility. So I won't dive into, uh, to the, uh, kind of the square footages and numbers. Uh, but that's just something that we've been working with, um, with staff on closely. Uh, just to touch base a little bit on the existing conditions. So we're really focusing in on the north side of the triangular kind of maintenance site area, um, trying to minimize the work and the impacts to the ball fields. And then also making sure we're, um, we're a good neighbor to the, to the residential area to the west. Um, with the preliminary concept plan, um, as I mentioned, we'll be doing a little bit of work to the ball field, regrading the infield, um, some spectator concrete areas, um, and adding lighting, uh, or upgrading the lighting. Uh, with the maintenance facility, it would be centrally located in the north area uh, with, um, yard space, material storage on the north end. And then we're reconfiguring or realigning the entry drive, uh, going north and south and providing some additional parking, um, near the ball field. Uh, from a floor plan standpoint for the maintenance building, uh, it's really broken up into kind of five designated areas. Um, on the left side, uh, which would be more adjacent to the ball field, uh, the pink area, that would be more of the public space. Well, potential use for batting cage or storage space. Um, moving to the right side, uh, the blue area would be the designated staff space. This would be the conditioned, um, heated and cooled space. Um, office, um, on the northern end, the main entry, um, would be here with a vestibule. Um, there would be storage, um, to the right for their flat files, um, and other miscellaneous storage. Um, moving to the, towards the bottom, additional office space here, two offices, uh, a staff room area that would accommodate, um, up to 12, uh, staff members. Um, janitor space, mechanical, and then, uh, separate locker room space here. Access from this, uh, potential batting cage area to the restrooms, uh, would be here, um, which would be kind of dual use, um, for, for staff and the public. Um, as, as we move down towards the bottom, uh, this would be our, our workshop area for, uh, metal and woodworking. Our main drive aisle, which would have storage for, or sorry, uh, parking for vehicles on the right side, mezzanine storage above, and then mezzanine storage above our, uh, our staff spaces as well. Wash bay access in the bottom right corner. Um, and Kyle, if I, if I interpret this right, I think this line is really kind of the line in the sand in the condition space. Yep. So cold storage over in this gray area here. Um, so additional storage here. This would be covered, uh, vehicle parking, um, open to the elements on the, on the north side. And then if we look at, uh, kind of a cross section view, um, approximately about 30 feet to the peak of, of the pre-engineered metal buildings. So it's really kind of two, two buildings that are, uh, pushed together. Um, our batting cage storage area here on the left, our office space with, uh, the mezzanine storage above, and then mezzanine storage here. Um, as I mentioned, this is that enclosed parking and then the cold storage, um, with a covered parking to the right.
Excuse me, how do you access the mezzanine storage?
So that'll be through ladder system.
Straight ladder, yeah.
Straight ladder. So smaller storage and generally you'd have ladder access for
staff and then an opening for a forklift to raise things up. So like a gated opening, so you could raise heavier things up to the storage. So it's not meant for occupancy. It's meant for pure storage.
Yeah.
Utilizing basically a dead space in the building.
Good question. And then just to kind of, uh, allude to kind of the, the 3D or the, uh, um, the feel and the design of the building. Um, you can see there's an opportunity for solar panels on that south side of the building. Um, the, the covered parking on the, uh, on the north side, um, as well. We're anticipating an eight-foot cedar fence along the, um, west side with landscaping. And then also privacy fencing here on the south side. There'd be a, um, a gate system between the parking area and then access to the yard and the rest of the maintenance facility. And then in terms of the, the colors and materials, uh, the team and staff has discussed, uh, um, a two-panel, uh, metal, uh, skin, which would be a terracotta, um, on the lower half to kind of pick up on the colors of, uh, the Take If Center along with a silver or a lighter gray, um, to accent the building as well. This illustrates the, the public, potential public access on the, on the south side, along with the staff access through the gates on the, uh, on the west. And then just some preliminary, uh, images and, uh, uh, examples of the materials, what the interior space would look like in terms of the structure and the, the insulation liners. Anything there? So then the next piece, I'm going to bring up Megan Zach. She's our Director of Sustainability. Uh, just to talk a little bit about the sustainable opportunities, uh, for this, for this building that's being considered.
Thanks.
Hello. Uh, like Bob said, my name's Megan Zach. I'm the Chief Sustainability Officer over at White and Company. Um, so some of the things that we've been looking at is, um, at White and Company, we have what we call the white sustainability standard. And what that means is that we, on every building that we work on, we have a set of kind of best practices that, that we bring in and into design, um, engineering and construction throughout the entire project. So I always like to just quickly level set some of the words that I'm going to be using. So um, trying to reduce energy is very important for us. So that's reducing the operational carbon of the project. So turning lights off, um, lowering the heat temperature. Um, net zero is something we always strive for. Um, on this building, you saw the solar panels. And so we've been trying to study, is there an opportunity to get to net zero energy on this project? The answer is maybe. Um, so to get to net zero energy, that means that as much energy as you're using, you're also producing throughout a calendar year. Um, obviously there's a lot more sun in the summer than in the winter. So you're using more energy in the winter. And then you're creating more energy in the summer. Um, what we always like to think about wellness, people spend time, a lot of time in buildings. And so making sure we're choosing products that are healthy for the people that are in the space is very important. Um, and then when we're picking materials, thinking about the full life cycle of those materials, um, is referred to as the embodied carbon. So sort of like the carbon footprint of a product. So one of the big things I mentioned that we're focusing on here is energy, um, specifically trying to reduce the amount of energy this building uses. So step one was to look at building orientation, having that large section of the roof with the solar panels facing directly south gives us a really good opportunity to create a lot of energy. Um, and then ultimately trying to look into that net zero potential. We've located the staff location a little inside the building so that there's a, uh, area that is tempered around it. And then therefore it's using less energy in the inner interstitial space. Um, we've also located a series of clear story windows, which are those really high windows. They face north. So they get that really nice reflected light into the space. And so you get natural light without all of the glare that comes with a window that's facing south. And then of, of course, we'll optimize the lighting. So we'll have just enough lighting that it's works for what's happening in this space, but not too much light. And then we'll make sure those lights turn off, um, if nobody's using that space. And then as I mentioned, looking into healthy materials and, um, reducing our water use. So one of the things we did was we ran a photovoltaic study on this roof. Um, and we estimated that the solar panels you saw in that image can create about 170 kilowatt hours of energy within a calendar year. Um, and then our energy modeler, there's a lot of words on the slide, he ran 11 different scenarios on how much energy this building would use. And it really, there's so many different factors that go into that. Um, of course, there's the design factors. So, um, the type of wall, how tight the building is, so construction, um, but then also how people use the building. So how you set your temperature, um, how many hours during the day it's used, all of that sort of thing. So we don't know if we can get to net zero energy. There is a possibility. There is a possibility, but, um, there's a lot of scenarios. And as we go through design, we will continue to have that conversation and see how close we can get. Um, we also put together a lead scorecard. So have any of you heard of lead certification? So, um, lead certification is for buildings. It's a third-party certification. That, um, helps create transparency for constituents and for everybody. So that they know that the building that was designed and constructed meets all of the requirements and promises that you've made to the community. What we have found at Whiting Company is that almost all of our buildings can get to lead certified without spending any additional money other than paying for the certification. So we always like to show this as an option. Um, if you're interested in it. So, um, our very first, um, pass through this, we are at about 34 points in the yes category. It takes 40 to get certified, but we have 55 in the maybe category. So I have no doubt that we could easily get this building certified if, if that is of interest to you. Um, and with that, uh, we can open it up for questions.
Okay, maybe, um, first I'd like to see if there's any, anyone from the public is here to make a comment about the maintenance facility ball field project. If so, would you like to go up and make your, your state, state, state your name and make a statement at the podium?
Anybody? Yeah, go right up, please.
And, um, like we said earlier, comments are limited to three minutes. And, uh, it's not our practice to kind of have a back and forth discussion or take questions at this time, but we'll consider your comments in our discussion to follow.
This public comment is what the, okay, okay, I'm Dave Fullerton. My wife, Sue, is over there. Uh, we moved over on Old Elm last June. So far I've been, uh, as a neighbor, you're concerned about sound and light at night. And I think everything has been pretty good. I've been pleasantly surprised with the, uh, the traffic back and forth, it's been quiet. And there are a couple of lights I would like to turn out, I don't know why they're there in a way, but, but it's light pollution at night for us. So in, in the regular parking lot, I understand it, I don't know if there's any plans to light all this additional parking all night. That, that would be my one concern, I guess. I mean, the building, everything looks great, so.
Maybe, um, if that's your comment, maybe Kyle or the team can address the lighting and then maybe kind of what to expect during the construction process.
Sure, uh, uh, first on the lighting, I would expect there would need to be some security lighting, but it would be minimal, just to make sure that you had sightlines in in case there's anything, you know, going on back there, but we wouldn't expect to have major floodlights or spotlights blasting towards that.
And any of it be, uh, sensors where if a car comes through.
We could look into sensors, they also make cutoff shields, which essentially cut off the throw of light, so you.
To, to the neighborhood, yeah.
Fence line, we've done that on other projects, so that's something we could.
Appreciate that, that's exactly, thank you.
And then the other part was just.
I was just curious about, you know, the construction, I take it that's like, just like limited to date time?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Hours and everything.
Within the Glencoe, uh, Village Glencoe's construction and noise ordinance hours, yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Peggy Unell, and I have lived 25 years, I think I've talked to you on the phone before, I've lived 25 years more. And I back up to the, um, to the maintenance facilities that are there now. And, um, I've been upset over the last few years because they really have not been maintained. And I've asked for them to be cleaned up and I'm very happy to see this rendering and I, I think it's going to be a huge improvement. I'd really like to know, like, how far that fence goes? I can't really tell if it's going to be, because I've, Rick Boyd's house used to back up to my house and I had a lot of protection. Since that's been gone, I've had no protection and I've had to replace my fence a few times. So I'm wondering how far down is that fence going to be going, number one? And I don't know if, you know, where my house is, if that covers where I am.
Where the parking lot is.
Yeah, we could pull up the other overhead to show exactly.
So I'm, I'm curious about that. And I'm also curious, like, how soon are the buildings that are now there, will they be coming down? Because it's definitely going to be a, a big impact on me. And if I want to move or if I'm thinking about how long I want to stay here, it's definitely, it impacts my, my property. So I'm really curious about timing and, um, how those buildings are going to be taken down. And I know that I heard you say that it's going to be, you know, you're going to be neighborly and all that, which I really appreciate and you always have been. But the, the way that it's been maintained these last few years is really, it's an eyesore. And it's embarrassing when I have people come over and I, we have to look at the way it's been taken care of. So I really am curious about the timing and really would like to know that it's going to be taken down in an orderly way. And not too much of a disturbance for, for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Before we address that, were there any other public comments?
No.
Okay, I think we can open it up to board discussion. Uh, Kyle, would you mind addressing those concerns first? I think the board would like to know too.
Sure. So, um, the, if you can address the fence and stuff, so the, um, I believe you live where we already took Ri- Rick Boldt's house down, right? So you live behind where his house used to be, so it's open now? Okay, so that's the, um, the open area, just where she is, where, if you remember the old, uh, maintenance, or the parks director. That's behind yours too. Well, that's why, that's exactly why we did the referendum, yeah. Because we knew that, we knew it was falling apart and that's why those will be taken down. We, it, anticipating when the board approves everything, we're anticipating removing those, uh, probably in the fall. September, October. Do you want to talk about the fence?
Yeah, so the fence, it's probably a little bit hard to see because it's dulled out in the background, but the, currently the cedar fence is called out to end. Just north of what we call the wood shop, so the second white building in. And basically another about 40 feet from that is where the cedar fence begins, so right about here. Just. Sure, I, I mean, extending that a slight amount of distance wouldn't be a, a major undertaking.
There's already, we talked about that, we believe there's already fencing, that's why we kind of stopped the fencing where it is.
Right.
Because there already was fencing, it would be fence on fence. But we could definitely look at if the board would like us to do that, look about extended and how much that would cost.
Yeah.
But there was already fencing, that's why we kind of found that as a stopping point.
Well, with that, I'm just curious, like, is, is with that and other fencing, I guess who's responsi- is the park district responsible for fencing past that point? And I guess is the neighbor is going to see two different fences in their backyard?
It's just like, it's just like your home, right? And so if, if your neighbor puts one up, then you usually don't put one up, right? You don't put, usually put, they put a fence up.
So that would be like by the property line, it wouldn't.
Yeah, it's on the property line. No, 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 it's on the property that we, any fence we resell would be on our property. So if we, if we continue down the fence line, then there's possibility there'd be fence on fence. So that's kind of why we stopped it there. But we could go, but then, you know, there might be other people that don't want a fence on a fence, but, uh, we would, if we wanted to extend the fence, we could. It would be on our property, it would be our, our, uh, responsibility to maintain.
There, there is, wait, hold on, sorry. Sorry, there, there are three houses right now that are kind of adjacent. There's 329, 327, and, and 326. The, the beauty is, is that from what I understand, the way this is drawn out. Only 329 will really be kind of, the building will only be, um, up to where 329 is, I think 327 and 326. We, we remove their view of any building, their, their view actually becomes the, the field, correct, right? So that to me is a, is a big net positive out there. 329, their view of the building still exists, but it's 20 feet over. I'm, I'm looking at Google Maps to kind of understand, maybe, maybe what we need is just a overlay of where we are, what we have today versus what we have before. But like, I, to me, I'm, I'm happy to, to spend a few minutes talking about fencing, but I don't think that's the real.
Yeah, we can, that's something that we can work out. That's something we can work through, that's not one of the, the critical items. We definitely work through fencing and extending it if the board chooses and, and things like that, that's not the expensive part, you're exactly right.
The, um, but, but I, what I am concerned about here, first of all, it looks beautiful, so thank you and good luck on your election. It, it looks beautiful, I'm, I am somewhat shocked that there's not more space dedicated to working. It seemed like there's a lot of day space dedicated to vehicle storage.
Oh.
Well, uh, it probably.
It's, it, that's, yeah, it, that's, they showed where the park, but you can explain.
Yeah, so, oh no, the, uh, the drawings might appear that way, but let me just go back because the main area of the building, it's really, so the, the main area, the conditioned part of what we'll call like the shop area, so the yellow. Really what's called out is parking in here would be seasonally available for parking if we had winter storms and we need to get vehicles inside. But we intend to have, you know, work benches and small equipment on this side, as well as over here at the workshop where you have the wood bench and the welding area.
And racks along the other side that we talked about.
Yeah, the bulk of our parking for vehicles is this enclosed or, um, covered parking. So this is open air to the north.
Okay.
So that's really the only truly dedicated parking. The cold storage area is going to be intended to be racks for our large pallets of items that are currently either in shipping containers or spread out through the random buildings.
The reason they do drive-through is if you have to load, they just pull it up and load up. And that's why there'll be racks there.
I love it.
All that is workspace.
And we did have.
That makes a lot more, I was like, where is the work area? How many vehicles does the park district own currently?
And we, uh, well, if you include like the Kubotas and tractors, it's in excess of 12 total vehicles.
Um, and we. You've got six parking spots.
Yes.
That you would always use as parking, there would be nothing else besides parking. So where do you put your tractors and your lawn mowers and all that fun stuff?
So depending on like the seasonal tasks we have, the stuff that's going out every single day would, in the daytime, be out, being used or pulled out. And in the overnight hours would then be pulled into the drive-through aisles on either the cold storage.
Okay.
Or the drive aisle.
After working out, yeah, after they're done for their shift, so they won't need the working.
And we did, we did, uh, bring in all the full-time park staff to discuss the operational needs. So kind of talk through all those sort of things with the people that are doing the day-to-day stuff.
I had a similar question too, so you have two offices.
Uh, there's three offices currently called out on here. One up here and then two back to back down towards the middle.
Okay.
So one's for Jared and one's for Matt. And then Kyle.
Do you really see us, I mean, I'm, look, I'm a baseball guy. Well, my kids don't play anymore, which makes me sad, but do you really see us using the red part as a batting cage? I can't think of a, e- e- either you do it as a batting cage or you do it as sort of storage, but like, to me, the optionality seems kind of, seems kind of odd, even the.
There was something that was brought up during, during the, the community input, um, by baseball, not a huge majority of baseball, just a couple about needing a batting cage. That's something that could be made smaller for just one batting cage, we've already talked about that.
Yeah, and, and so the way that the space is designed is really, it'll be a, a concrete slab and then you would just put down the artificial turf in that footprint of the batting cage, but in terms of the shell of that portion of the building, it works nicely as a storage area, which we're limited on here in take it. So potentially special events and custodial supplies and things like that, um, could move into that portion of the building. It doesn't have a super high ceiling height, so you wouldn't be able to get forklift and things like that, but would be more of your daily kind of light duty.
Actually, my, my concern is, um, is the, that's a lot of money to build on a batting cage. I'd actually almost rather see us, I mean, you, you've got 20% of your, of your building dedicated to a batting cage of a 13, 14, how much is this?
It's 15,000.
15 million?
Oh, 15,000 square foot, I thought you were.
Sorry, but, sorry, how much, how much?
7.5 is the budget construction.
You've got a seven and a half million dollar budget here and it looks like about 15% of this. If I look at one, two, three, you've got four indoor spaces, so 25% of your indoor spaces are dedicated to a batting cage. That to me seems like an excessive amount of money. Uh, and not, I, I would rather us save half a million dollars and build a smaller building than have that, but if you need it for storage, I totally get that and I'm all in for it because we do need storage. I just, to me, the, the concept of a batting cage for, you know, for.
That's, I mean, that's really, that's up to the board.
For 1.5 million is a lot of money.
If the board liked to take away that, the batting cage, we could definitely make it smaller, like we said, we could fit, it could be just a batting cage for one batter, you know, so three people max in there, absolutely, we do need storage.
Um.
I'm not going to take, I'm just, I'll finish, because we do not, we have like special event stuff and we don't have any place to, to put that stuff. It's kind of up in rafters and things like that. We could definitely make that smaller, you could sit, you could tell us, don't make it for a batting cage and that would probably bring some of the expenses down. Because then you don't have to have access to the bathroom over there, um, things like that, absolutely, there's different things that could change. So if, if the board decides, okay, community said they wanted a, a small batting cage, but we don't really think it's, we don't have the money to do that, that is the board's decision. But we're just showing you what the community asks for and providing that to you. And we could also make it smaller, it's made for, I think, two batting cages right now, right?
Yeah, we, we could absolutely reduce the footprint.
Smaller.
I think it will get more use than you think. I also think it's a space that can be repurposed if it's not used. And we could change that in the future and we would still need it for storage anyway, or if we needed more offices, that option would exist. But, um, every community around us has that and we don't, and it is nice and we are a big baseball and softball community, so.
But.
And it has been asked.
I think my, my fear is that, look, if you were to tell me that was just storage, I'd say go build it in a heartbeat. But once we build a batting cage like Milton Park, it doesn't go away. So if you need more storage, no one's going to say, oh, let's give up the batting cage and use that as storage. So for me, it's like.
News, then that's what happens.
Totally.
Be honest with you.
I, I hear you, but it's, it is a, it's, it's, it's hard to take anything away from the community. So I, I think we should just think long and hard, because this is going to be here for another 30, 40 years. If you want it for storage, um, which I'm all for, and I don't mind spending money on storage, I think it's.
Want to be able to repurpose that if it's not used in the community. If that, if a batting cage is used and needed by the community, then it would stay a batting cage, not a pitching cage, batting only. We do have a little bit of storage at the bottom, you see that little line? So the whole thing is not bad, so that part is storage for sure. So it's just that area there. And if, that's why potential storage or batting cages, because if it's not used by the community, we would look to GBA, to provide the batting, the batting, uh,
机器, machines.
And they would have to help fund that part of it, so that's why we didn't put, that's not part of, we will not be putting that as part of our expense, they would have to do that. But, um, yeah, there is, there is expense because we have to get them to the bathroom, so we had to put a door there for the bathroom, um, things like that.
I agree with, I agree with Stephanie, I think it will get used. I don't think you're ever going to take it back. And I, and that's, that's my question for you, this is a building that we're building for 25 years. I would not, I, I, I like the way it says, you know, potential fu- future batting cage. It doesn't say potential future storage, but like, once it's there, it's there, it's there permanently and it's expensive.
Is, is there a way we could plan for it and then if something happens with cost override, so we could take it out later?
Yeah, I think the way that the space is intended to be designed, it, it's just having the infrastructure to put in cages, which is a certain power supply available for the machine. And then really the, your typical batting cages are just netting hung, hung up. And so it's not a, designing it for a future batting cage is not a major cost, it'd be the.
Okay, and, and I guess if, so like, let's say the cost of materials spikes in the next year. Is this, is this something that could, like, and we have to, you have to come back to the board and say, oh, we're going over budget. Is this something that could easily?
Know, we had to.
You'd have to know.
Right away, so.
Part right away.
Our first thing we're going to do, our plan is, once this is approved, when it, hopefully, whenever it is, hopefully sooner rather than later, there, we're going to order that steel immediately because of the tariffs. We're not dragging our feet on that, that's the, that's the part that we would need to get an order in as soon as possible, as soon as the board is comfortable with it and ready to move forward. So that has, that decision has to be made.
The footprint in the building has to be decided, Bob, do you want to speak any of this at all?
The strategy of being able to, uh, get this building under construction in the fall is we need to, to order the buil- like Lisa said, order the building in May, June, um, to be able to have it delivered in the fall. So, um, that's one critical piece. So we can still work on kind of finesse the design and tie in, in the interior space of the building. But to get kind of the footprint nailed down, um, that's, that's critical in terms of a sequencing.
We, like I said, we could make it smaller, we could just make it one batting cage, absolutely, we've talked about that already, so we make it a little bit smaller. That just powers one, you know, it, it doesn't have to be for a whole team to go in and have batting cage, that was never the intention. It was meant to, you know, stuff, you know. That was never the intention. It was meant to, you know, to, you know, the coach and the kid and the father.
But that's not something, that's the initial footprint right now that we have to worry about. We're gonna have one or two cages.
Um, yes, we, if, we would have to make a decision, want to make that a little bit smaller, you know.
But wouldn't the footprint be the same and you would just use it for storage?
That's what I was thinking.
No, I mean, for storage, yes, but not if it's one or two batting cages. Because then you, that area is going to be, the front part is going to be used for batting cages, whether it's one or two. The back would be storage. If we don't use it all, then the whole thing could be storage.
Well, my thought is that we're not gonna have another opportunity to add storage space for the foreseeable future. So if we can afford it, and it was in the referendum and that's what we told the community.
Which I believe it was, right?
Yeah, I think we should just, I think we should do it because we're not going to be able to go back and do it later.
This discussion about batting cages was in every referendum material that was moved by the board, so.
Yeah, and people voted for it.
So it could be, you could, you could continue with this, I guess, square footage or dimension of this, the pink space, but consider maybe half of it for permanent storage and the other half.
Right, so that's something we could do later.
And that wouldn't affect, you know, the footprint of the building.
Okay.
We need a certain amount of length. And so that's what we're gonna do for the length is the max and then the rest will be storage. And I guess I disagree if, things are repurposed all the time in Park and Rec. And if we don't find that there's a need for a batting cage, if for a year no one's booking it out, we have that data to say, no one booked this out for a year. We are moving on from this concept. They, people said they wanted it, but they never used it. Then we move on from that. And I think we have done that in other rooms. We repurpose rooms all the time. So there's, I don't think you're, have to have it if, if people don't show, we have the ability to do it and they don't show it to you, or GBA doesn't want to pay for the equipment or whatever.
I think it'll get used. I think, I think it will get used. I just, I just don't want us to think that. I think it will get used. I think we just, I don't want us to give up, think that we're gonna get that space back. It's not 100% guaranteed we're gonna get that space back.
Right, oh, I totally agree. And that was always our assumption that.
To Bob's point, it would be if we reduce the amount of footprint dedicated to the batting cage to be minimum, how much the minimum we need, and then dedicate the rest of that length dedicated to storage and we pick up storage and have future potential additional.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think it's a better way to, better way to broach it. I do think you're gonna need storage. Like I think you're, you're a growing park district. We, you know, we've got more kids in the community, you're gonna do more special events. So I like the idea of storage. The only other two comments that I have are, one, you know, having, sharing a bathroom with, with maintenance colleagues who may come in a little bit dirty or muddy or this and that from planting or mowing could be challenging. I see you've got one shower in there. Is there, is that only?
That's all they, they.
They don't, yeah.
That's all they wanted.
They only want.
I think that's all.
It was a discussion.
They have none now.
There's, there's showers back there that are not utilized.
Yeah, but they're probably not, like, these, it's gonna be a nice shower.
And there is a special, there is a one, a regular bathroom right there. So like if Kyle or whatever, guests for Kyle, there is a bathroom right there.
Okay, I, that was my only concern was like, you know, I know we do it in other places. I know in Watts, our staff shares the bathroom with our, with our guests. But like, in general, the Watts, people don't come in with muddy shoes.
Like, that's why we've got that extra one, which, which is, would be there regardless of batting cages.
And then that third bathroom is separated by a locked door. It'll keep the public out of the non-public space. So there's two doors at that one, yeah. So in theory, you could come into that bathroom vestibule from the batting cage storage area without being able to get into the.
So you would, you would keep that, you would keep it open to the public more than you would to the maintenance team?
It would be either or. So you'd be able to, I guess, enter from the non-public side at all times. And then you could enter in from the storage batting cage area.
Yeah.
When you have it on timers.
So the maintenance operation starts, it stops at 3:30. Batting cages get going at 3:30. So that's why there's a separate entrance.
Got it, got it, got it.
To get into the batting cage and then a separate entrance to get in the bathroom, but the rest of the building will be locked.
That makes sense.
From that bathroom.
And I imagine the, our employees would use the lockers bathroom much more frequently than.
Yes, that, that would be their bathrooms and then.
That's their primary bathroom.
Would be for Kyle and Jared or whatever and, and public.
Sorry, you had another.
No, no, that, that was it. Thank you.
I, I wanted to ask about security for that. I mean, I guess that door is probably gonna be badged, but just in terms of like the storage or the open storage space, how, what are we doing for that?
So on, if we back out to the overall site plan, the entire site will be behind a gate. It'll get opened at the beginning of our operations each morning and closed at the end of the day. The entire perimeter is then contained by a fence now, which it's not currently. So on the whole, the site will be behind a locked fence when we're not there. Overhead doors would be controlled by remotes. And then the doors, the, the man doors would be just standard hardware. And then we could talk about obviously installing security cameras and.
We'll have security cameras.
Security cameras and motion activated lights and all that.
Much more secure than is now.
Is that the answer to the question? Yeah.
What about the quality of the solar panels? Are we, I don't know much about them. Is it something that we feel like will be good for a long time? Like what about the manufacturer? Are they gonna be in business, you know, in 10 years?
That's always a good question. I would say 10 years ago, there were a lot of solar companies that were in business and then went out of business. I think that the market has stabilized a lot in the last few years. We have seen companies that have installed solar panels on roofs and then they go out of business. Somebody else can maintain those panels if need be. Solar panels tend to be, they tend to last 25 to 30 years. That's the lifespan of the panels themselves. And then the inverters that help control the electrical switching has to be replaced like every 15 years. One thing I didn't mention is there's sort of two options for solar. You can buy it outright. There's quite a bit of grants and incentives right now. Everything's very unsure. 40% of that money comes from the federal government. We don't know what's gonna happen if they're gonna try to claw that money back. There's also grants that come from the state of Illinois and from ComEd. Those are more stable. If you buy outright, there's obviously that first cost. But we're seeing with the incentives that the payback from energy savings and all of the incentives is about five to six years. So it's a pretty quick payback. And then you save energy for 20 to 25 to 30 years. The other option is to make an agreement with a power purchase, PPA, purchase, power purchase agreement, sorry. And that is where a third party comes in and they essentially rent your roof. So you have no first cost, you have no maintenance cost. They put the solar panels on your roof. You get to tell your whole community that you're doing the right thing for the environment. And then you make an agreement with the power purchase team to buy that power from them. So you still save money over time because electricity costs will continue to go up and you lock in on a, a single price. So over time, you do save quite a bit of money and there's no maintenance cost. If something happens and you have to replace a section of your roof, your power purchase company will come and take the panels off, you repair your roof. We've also chosen a standing seam roof, so the panels just clip right on. So there's no holes that get poked into your roof. It's a very simple installation method.
And we'll talk in more detail about solar roofs and things like that as we move forward.
Okay, so in terms of kind of decision-making that you're going to need from us, the top things is like basically the.
The footprint.
The footprint.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we feel good about that for the next board meeting?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Sounds like you guys did a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the discussion of the truck perp purchase next.
Can I get to there? Thank you. Okay, so as you know, we have been trying to purchase vehicles really since, I think, the pandemic. And we've had a very hard time securing said vehicles. So Kyle, do you want to speak to this?
Yep, sure. So I think it was the January 7th board meeting, we presented on capitals, including Fund 65. We had indicated that we've had a real hard time procuring our trucks through traditional purchasing methods, buying through a bid process or through cooperative purchasing alliances. We currently have a purchase, an order in through a co-op that's been over, I think, 14 months since placed and still hasn't gone into production. So we're looking for a different, more creative way to get our trucks on hand quickly. And so we've indicated, the standard reporting was coming to you for a not to exceed dollar amount authorization to go purchase a truck off lot and then have it outfitted for its intended use. Given that it's really a retail item, we don't expect to see major price differences dealer to dealer. And so what we put together is a recommendation for purchase authorization for an F-150 in the amount of $57,000 and a Ford Transit in the amount of $65,000. Those dollar figures are based off of current sticker price at a local lot with a $5,000 cushion in case that particular vehicle is not available or there's some marginal increase between board approval and purchase time.
The village has, has done this, so. And we checked with our attorneys. It's legal for us to do this also.
Yeah, I would say do it as soon as you can because like with everything else, prices can only maybe go up, so.
So we bring it to the board meeting, you authorize it, and then we can go ahead and do it right away.
Great.
Nice work.
Okay. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to the discussion of the village agreement for the greenhouse and tree nursery.
So as you know, we're working on an agreement with the village to use their property. So we do a license agreement with the village for the location of our greenhouse. And then we're also doing a combined tree nursery. So they would be using part of our land for their section of the tree nursery. So in the, in the packet was the license agreement. It has been approved by both, both attorneys. At this point, there's maybe one little tweak because I didn't have public in there. So that line will be added to it. But other than that, this is our recommendation to move forward with this. We would move forward approval at the board meeting and then the village would do so when they're, when they put on their agenda.
Great.
And it's at no cost to the, to the park district. So it's kind of a swap of, of land. We're saying.
Okay.
Great update. Questions? So, okay, so we'll move that. If it, if it's okay, we'll just put, add that to the consent agenda item instead of fine. Okay. All right.
Next, moving forward, discussion of the Weinberg Advisory Committee. Welcome, Bobby.
Thank you.
We're okay. I heard you had.
Yeah, it was a little crazy on Sunday out of, with the storms. But yes, glad to be back just.
As you know, we have, we've had the Weinberg Advisory Group since, what is it, 2012? And it's been a little, a lot less active than, say, the Beach Advisory Committee. With, we're seeing, we saw a lot of excitement around the renovation, but after that, it has totally dropped off and we're not really getting the participation we have. Now the, the Weinberg Center's obviously used much more for year-round recreation, pickleball, our after-school program. So we don't really see a need to have an active advisory committee on just this piece of recreation. We would recommend dissolving this advisory group and then as needed, as we do in other areas, do task force if needed. So we do task force, for Dog Park, we do task force for after-school programs if, if we have an issue or pickleball or whatever. That would be our recommendation, so we're just not getting the, the people to come out to meetings.
I think it makes sense. The letter in the packet made sense. It's, if you don't need it and you don't get participation, just use it when you didn't need it.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
Okay. Okay, so we'll put that on the consent agenda, I know also. The next is the agreement with Glencoe Junior Kidergarten. And Bobby, we'll take this one.
Sure, so we're proposing a three-year agreements. We are, their current agreement is expiring in May and we're looking to roll that over for another three years. You'll see in the packet, really the major change is the increase in the revenue split from 25% to 27%, as the board probably remembers. There's been discussions about increasing that over time in a sustainable way for them and for us to cover our costs. There was some additional language added about guaranteeing indoor space for specific times, formalizing some office space and some operational, small operational things. And then also just changing some wording around registration of flexibility as we're not competing at the same time for half-day preschool going forward. It gives them a little bit more flexibility to, to open up their registration or delay their registration. So our goal is just to give it, get the agreement in front of the board for any feedback. And then if there is any we can address, or if the board has consensus on the agreement, we can present it at the April board meeting for approval.
I just had one question. There was a note in there about their office space. Was that ever in question? Is that why that was put in there?
So in the previous agreement, we actually, they went, they went from two offices to one. And there's just been a lot of change going on down there with, we've been expanding our program, obviously. So they just wanted to ensure it was written in the contract that that office would remain for the, the term of this agreement.
That makes sense. Okay. And it's the one in front still?
Yeah, it's the one in the corner facing out into the parking lot.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so that will be moved again for approval at the April board meeting under consent agenda. The last one is just, it's a little housekeeping. In our, our policy for overnight stays for conferences, we had that it shall not exceed the GSA rate. The GSA rate hasn't gone, been going up with the equation to meet it. So we're finding that, well, this year alone, we had to bring three separate ones to the board, that the conference hotel block rate doesn't even match GSA. So we're asking for the policy to change it, it's conference hotel rate or GSA. So if for some reason they didn't want to stay at the conference hotel room, they would have to at least meet that GSA. So a little housekeeping on that one.
Lisa, why does this come to us? I mean, don't you have the ability to do that as your?
Not for that, no.
That's, okay, because I thought you had the ability to go up to 1,500 without.
Not for, for that because it's in the policy. It states that in the policy. So with this, I can.
Okay, I would, can, can we, so I would, I mean, we trust our director. If we trust you to spend up to $1,500, can't, can't we just say that?
There's, there's certain legal requirements for overnight stay and.
It are, okay.
And transparency. People are very.
Got it.
Conscious of conference spending, so I would recommend not doing that. Keep the policy the way it is. That has to be the government, the block, hotel block. I just want to be transparent that.
No, I appreciate it.
We're going on Oom Doggo, which we don't. So I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're clear with that and that we follow the other requirements.
Got it, okay. I was trying to make it easier, but.
I know, thank you. I appreciate that. I really do.
Sounds like I'm not.
But yeah, it would just, I don't think that'd be very transparent. So we want to make sure we keep with that, within that. John, if John was here, he would say the same thing, so.
Okay, I, I, I believe you.
Okay, so is that a consensus? Move that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and with that, I think we, is there any other business that?
There is no other business.
Okay, and I don't have any other business or reason to go into closed session. So I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.